Border and let's pledge allegiance to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please stand for the invocation, Leanna. We have some items to remove from the agenda. Under G Public Works, we need to remove the two items that are listed there on our agenda and under would be number nine, we need to add closed session honorary award. Yeah, it's item number nine, closed session honorary award needs to be added and the other two taken off. Councilman McGowan made the motion to accept the agenda. Councilman Brown seconded, all in favor? All opposed? Okay. The first item we have is approval of town council meeting minutes for March the 20th. David McGowan, Councilman McGowan, made the motion to approve them. Councilman Trippett seconded, all in favor? Let it be known by saying aye. And now we have a public hearing. Zoning request for an ordinance to rezon property at thirty-one eighty-one U.S. Highway seventy west. Wendy?
We received an application from the owners at thirty-one eighty-one requesting that their land be rezoned from agriculture to commercial. It is a general rezone.
Okay, go ahead.
For the benefit of those online, Wendy, come and use my microphone.
Okay. Um, we did get a request from the owners requesting rezon from ag to commercial C seventy. Um. If you read over the packet where we've gone through everything and Attorney De Soubland has helped us with this because this one is a little bit different. We do have the findings of fact there. Um. Wait a minute, let me back up. So I got y'all all on the same page. On page four. The master plan, closer retail restaurants, grocery stores is the number one item on the wish list of residents for our master plan that was adopted in December of two thousand nineteen and it's all considered commercial development. Also in section six point four of the master plan, existing business retention and expansion, Wilson's Meals is ideally located to grow its commercial services sector. Diverse businesses, including resilient job creators, specialty markets, professional services, health professionals, and town plan twenty forty, our comprehensive land use master plan for the town of Wilson's Meals. On page forty-eight, food and beverage establishment supplemented by small industry, craftsmanship, and artistic endeavors, both for profit and nonprofit will be required of Wilson's Meals is to refresh its local purpose in the region. Without this emphasis, we risk becoming dependent on franchise and chain business enterprises with limited long-term commitment to the community. In section eight point two point two, commercial non-residential growth in order to grow commercial and non-residential offerings, a community must create opportunities for success and the first step is to promote interest in both residents and visitors alike. By increasing the presence of people in the commercial setting, the critical mass necessary for businesses to sustain themselves will ensure vibrancy as the tourism visitors flow into and through the community. Town council approval shall be based on the findings of facts and to include the planning board's recommendation as well as the town's planning department recommendations. Both are listed below. The findings of fact per article seven point eight of the Wilson's Meals Development Ordinance requires the compliance of specific findings of fact in order to grant a rezone. The applicant shall submit the following statements of jurisdiction presenting factual information supporting each and all of the required findings as they relate to the proposed rezone request. That the use or development is located, designed, and proposed to be operated so as to maintain or promote the public health, safety, and general welfare. The statement by the applicant was it would benefit the growth and prosperity of the town by adding more commercial property. That the use or development complies with all required regulations and standards of the Wilson's Meals Development Ordinance and with all other applicable regulations. Statement by the applicant, our development on this property will meet our local, state, and federal regulations to promote positive business in the town of Wilson's Meals. That the use or development is located, designed, and proposed to be operated so as not to substantially injure the value of adjoining or abutting properties or that the use or development is a public necessity. Statement by the applicant, the development on this property would be in alignment with the adjourn- adjoining business and the religious institution on the opposite side of said property. That the use or development will be in harmony with the area in which it is to be located and conforms to the general plans for the land use and development of town of Wilson's Meals and its environments. Statement by applicant, the commercial development of this property is within the future land use map and Unified Development Ordinance Regulations, commercial development along Highway seventy, future I forty-two will be a great asset to the town of Wilson's Meals. This is where we get a little different. The statement of consistency and reasonableness. Although this request is not consistent with the town's future land use map, it aligns with the purposes and objectives of the town's comprehensive land use plan as set forth in the foregoing analysis of the master plan and the findings of fact. This request is also reasonable for the foregoing reasons as it promotes commercial growth along Highway seventy. The application for rezoning went before the Town of Wilson Mills Planning Board on February twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-three, and they recommended approval to town council. While getting the packet together for town council, it was discovered that the information presented to the planning board had been incorrect. Therefore, it was sent back to the planning board on March twenty-seventh. After seeing the corrected information, the planning board recommended approval of file number RZ twelve, two thousand twenty-two to allow the rezone from ag to C seventy for this parcel of land. The town planning department recommendations, after reviewing this file, Wendy Oldham, Development Compliance Officer for the Town of Wilson's Meals recommends that this rate rezone be approved. Although it is not consistent with the future land use map, this rezoning along Highway seventy, I forty-two generally aligns with the goals and objectives of the town's future land use plan and will help bring the commercial aspect to the town that the citizens have requested. Town council action requested approval of the rezone, table of the rezone, or denial of the rezone.
Is there anyone here to speak from the applicant or against or for this rezone? Okay, I wanted to make sure so that we made sure everybody that needs to speak have spoke. Okay?
All right, I have a couple of questions. My first question is, is on page, I apologize, uh, page four. The, the beginning, uh, closer retail. What's our, what's our defined definition of retail? I mean, i- as far as retail is, it could be a roadside produce stand.
True. And this is a general rezone, so anything that will be allowed in the C seventy.
Refresh me a C seven.
C seventy is the commercial. C seventy is the one that allows your businesses, your restaurants, your car dealerships, your businesses of any kind to be able to come in. Retail stores.
So do we know what, what they want to bring in, what they're looking at? And, and I know this is like a record for you, but, but I'm going to ask every time.
Under a general rezone, they do not have to give us that information.
Okay.
At what point, Wendy, do they have to give us information as to what they're going to put in there?
When they submit their site plan.
Say what?
When they submit their site plan.
We have the capability, the ability then to approve or disapprove of the business?
No, once, once it has been rezoned and they submit a site plan, as long as that site plan meets our Unified Development Ordinance and guidelines, then we have to approve it.
This, this public hearing is for rezoning only. It's not to determine what goes on the property. It is for only rezone.
I agree with that and I just want to make sure that's clear. Even if you knew what was going on the property, you couldn't approve it for that single use. If they, if they said that they're going to build a car dealership or put a target out there, you couldn't approve it on the condition that they only put that there. When you rezone it, it's in a general rezone, it's going from one just class, one district to a different class, a different district, and they can put any permissible uses on this property. So when you consider whether to approve or disapprove of a general rezone, you're looking at all uses that are permitted within that district and making a decision based on all of those uses, not the use that is presented by the applicant, or if they don't present one, you, you, you still have to just look at all permissible uses and making that decision.
All right, thank, thank you, counsel. Then I'll ask this question. Tell me, it says this request is not consistent with the town's future land use map.
Look, if you don't mind, I'm gonna, I'm gonna answer that or not answer that, but I'm going to shed a little light on that. The implications of that. And Wendy can jump in if, if I'm wrong about this, but it appears to me that this is, this parcel lies on an area that did not was not within the scope of where the future planning of the town was contemplated at the time the plan was adopted. It appears that there's no use recommended for that nor anticipated for that area.
There was, there was one recommended for that area. The planning board had recommended it go on the future land use map as commercial. But when the future land use map was completed, that particular area of commercial was left as residential instead of switching it over to commercial on the future land use map.
Okay, so it was originally supposed to be C seventy and inadvertently it was included in the ag section. Is that correct?
The residential section.
Residential, so it should be commercial. Is there a property right next to it that's included in the commercial or was, where's the, where's the line drawn?
There's a church on one side.
Right.
And on the other side, it's zoned residential, but my understanding is that that is also a car lot on that side.
Oh, that's already there?
Yes.
So this, and the church is in the red, is in the residential zoning?
The church should have been zoned civic.
Okay.
When our rezoning was completed in two thousand nineteen. And again, it was inadvertently left off and it is still zoned as civic, I mean, as ag at this time.
So the surrounding properties are, are currently zoned commercial, but they, to a, to a small extent, they should have been, no?
None of it got changed to commercial or civic.
And what about that car lot?
It's still residential.
Is a car lot permitted under residential?
No.
What are we going to do about that?
I'm working on that.
Can you be more definitive at what you're working on or is this, should we come and see you in private or what?
Yes. I'll be glad to talk to you about what we're going to have to do with that. We're going to need to make some changes to our future land use map. I think to get it up to where the planning board and the town council at the time had requested it to be.
Okay, so that's commercial and the applicants are requesting commercial on this.
It is, but none of it's commercial right now.
Right.
So, so we're going to have to address both sides of this property, correct, at some point.
At some point, there's going to have to be more changes in that area, yes.
Well, would it, would it not behoove us to, to postpone this and see where, where we have to, to, to follow along with those, those as well?
That's at the pleasure of the council, what you prefer to do with it. The applicant requested it for just this parcel at this time. And I'm not sure the applicant's even aware of the other issues that may be going on.
I want to go back for a quick second. As you indicated, this is not the normal hearing for something like this, so. Is that car lot, is there a car lot right there or next to, next to it?
There has.
Yes.
There has been one there. Um, I haven't seen cars on that property for quite some time.
Now a home in there or just an empty lot?
It's just, no.
Okay. Um, I'm in, I'm okay with it. I mean, I, I put a lot of trust and faith in our, in our planning board. And that this will be taken care of. I don't have any real problem with that. So while I have the floor, let me just throw one thing out here. If it weren't for Google Earth, I never would have found this place. Could you do two photographs next time, a large one? I'm looking at it and going, you know, I think I know where that is, but I'm not quite sure. And unlike other members of the council, I can't say, oh, that's right next to Bobby Jones property. I don't know Bobby Jones. That's just, I threw that out there. See what I'm getting at? I'd like an, an overall shot of maybe the surrounding area, like a mile shot. And then zone in on this and I go, okay, now I know exactly where it is. Okay, because I had to do some little bit of research. Not that I mind it, but I had to do that. So on the findings of fact, I'm looking at one of number three and where it says would be in alignment with the adjoining business and that's pretty much what we're referring to.
Yes.
That used, it, it, adjoining business that really is no longer there, but it was.
Right.
And it fell under the jurisdiction. Okay, I needed to do that. Um, that's all I have.
It did, did I, did I read in here where, where the adjoining properties were notified?
Yes.
What were their response?
They haven't responded. No. They all received letters and the property was also posted and it was also, an ad was also ran in the Johnstonian news.
Are, may I, are you ready for a, a motion on this or not? Any more questions or anything else?
Yeah, we're going to close the public hearing first. Does anybody else have any more comments or any questions for Wendy before? Okay, we're going to close the public hearing at six fifty. And now we need the pleasure of the.
All right, I'll, I'd like to make a motion to approval of rezone of partial seventeen K zero eight zero four three G at thirty-one eighty-one U.S. Highway seventy west from A G to C seventy, the adoption of the statement of consistency and reasonableness as set forth in this request for action.
Okay, we have a motion to rezon, seconded. Any more discussion? All in favor? Let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Let me mention something real quick before you move on to the next agenda topic. Just for your edification more than anything else, the future land, the, the future land use map is a forward-looking document that your planning board prepared and you approved. And it's, it doesn't have any effect other than as a guidance. So, so ordinarily you looked to, for something to be consistent with that and you hope that it is if, if the document was, you know, if they had the crystal ball was, was, was good, but, but there are things that are not consistent. And if, and that's not fatal to approval, as you've done here tonight, you've approved something that was not consistent with the map. But state laws states that if you approve something that's not consistent with your map, that automatically updates your map to be reflective of that, uh, the action that you took. So I just wanted to throw in that information.
Okay. Now we'll have the first open forum. If anybody has anything they want to bring before council. State your name, the address, and limit your comments to three minutes.
I'm Jim Usel. I live at one thirty-eight Usel Industrial Drive, Clayton. Two findings of fact. In nineteen eighty-three or eighty-four, Johnston County followed the corridor of I seventy, I mean, of US seventy, which is going to be I forty-two, as all of you know. Three hundred feet from the center of the road on both sides is, was changed to small business. You had to go back and fight that if you wanted. For example, Clifford's Farm still remained agriculture. Anybody else who applied for agricultural status got that. But if you didn't, it became small business automatically. And I don't remember the year exactly, eighty-three or eighty-four, maybe eighty-five. And that's the case for three hundred feet on both sides of the road of seventy highway.
No, sir. If it's in our jurisdiction, it's under our zoning.
Okay, I didn't finish. I said, I was going to say, this could have changed when the town became involved, but prior to that, just like our farm up there was, we changed it because we knew what the development was going to be. And incidentally, this is right across the road from Double Barley. And the whole other side of the road and that side of the road is commercial and will continue to be so. Charlie Edwards' lot has been a car lot for twenty-five years or more. His health is very, very poor and I think he's lost both legs now and is not able to run it, but that's what it has been for some time. Just fact.
Fact. Okay. Anyone else? Close to open forum. Go into regular business. I haven't been very active this month. I've only been to the mayor's meeting and Leanna joined me for that meeting and we had a very, very productive meeting with the mayors and the town administrators and town managers across Johnston County. And there's a lot of ideas that are being floated out there by the mayors and when something comes down that I can keep you informed of, I will. But, um, Leanna and I are going to be going to and I can't even remember who we're, Conover, Concord, Concord next week for the league convention and looking forward to meeting some people and talking again about some things for the town. But that's all I have. Issue? Oh, Leanne, I'm forgetting you. I forgot you, Leanne. Oh yeah, she's got a lot of things to tell us.
Not me already.
Okay.
Um. Okay, I don't have anything on the agenda, but just a, a few updates for you. First of all, an update on the dog park out at the community park. The area in the back of the park where we have been planning to do the dog park, we will not be able to put it in that spot. We have been using a map from the Corps of Engineers when they came out in sixteen or seventeen to draw the line for the wetlands. And after the buildup work that was done out on the rugby fields by H and H, if you all remember that, where they exchanged services for dirt and all that, that actually moved the tree line. So where we thought we were putting the dog park is in the wetlands. So luckily we had only cut down some briars and underbrush and stuff, which Patrick and Tony both worked very hard to do, but once it started getting really wet, we called the engineer out there and the full scientist who did the work back in sixteen and seventeen. And because it is in wetlands, we're not going to be able to do the dog park back there. I've talked with the county and they're aware that we're trying to figure out where the dog park will be located out there. And I'm meeting with Part F representatives Friday and the rugby club to talk about the second phase of the Part F grant. And when we meet, we're going to talk about depending on where their activities are going to take place, where the dog park will be. And the county has said that whenever we figure that out, to resubmit a letter to them and we'll still get the grant from the county, but it's on hold for right now. Um, second item that I have is, we have talked about the cameras and the, the locks, the keyless locks at the new location. I'm going to if you don't mind, just run it down. We got back a quote from the same company who has done the other cameras in town. And I'm going to let she talk with you a little bit about how it is that they tie in with those other cameras. And the reason we went with them is because of the way they connect with the cameras that we already have in place, which are out at the park for monitoring. They also do the key card entry for employees on both of the buildings, the both, both the maintenance building and the administration building. And cameras inside in the, at those entrances, not in the hallways or in the offices or anything like that, but at the entrances and in the council chambers at the back door. All of that together comes to a one-time fee of fifty-three thousand four seventy-nine.
Say it real fast, Leanna.
Fifty, I did. Fifty-three thousand four seventy-nine. Honestly, I was kind of thinking around forty or forty-five, so it's not too far from what I was thinking, but it is a little more than what I had in mind. This does include, that fee does include a five-year license for both the cameras and the security locks. So we will not, though, the fees for the licensing for both of those together run about eleven thousand dollars every five years. But this fifty-three thousand includes that license for the next five years. So we won't pay anything else for five more years. But on this quote that I'm giving you, if you'll look at the, um, the first page with the pictures of the cameras that span, if you'll, it looks, it's this, this page, it's right after the page with the big price on it. That top picture shows you the cameras and what areas they will span out to. So that's eight cameras. Three security locks in the administration building and two in the maintenance building. So it covers all of the parking areas and there, there's one camera up at the top of that picture. If you see, it's kind of a dark gray triangle looking. That's the one that spans out towards the road coming into the property.
Leanna, is there any provision for battery backup on these? If the power goes out, all the cameras are dead?
That is a chief question. I'm going to let chief answer that question based on the other camera.
Dirty look from the chief, so. Thirty look for the chief, so.
That's a good question. I know the part camera does go out sometimes on occasion. I don't know. I'm not sure about the battery backup part of it.
Are these cameras all remote or are they wired together to go come to one central source?
Yeah, they're hardwired to one central source.
So. Battery backup is feasible, do you think?
I would think so, especially the, the door locks, the key locks and all that stuff. I would think so.
Yeah, maybe even a solar powered thing, you know, it's just always juicing itself up.
Yeah, I know the solar part, the solar part is not part of it. That was an option that we chose not to go that route.
Will we look into the, the battery backup on these?
Yeah.
And chief, these are the same type cameras that we already have, right?
Yes, it's the Ricotta platform.
Like what we want to have at the park?
Yeah, just like the park. Um, and we specifically chose that one. Uh, because of the software features that go along with it, some of the things we can do. And we thought was best, if we, we got the six cameras, five cameras at the park and one at Mill Creek. If we're gonna add additional cameras, keeping them on the same platform, we can do the same thing and look at them the same way. Rather than have a whole nother system that we have to go in and out of, you know.
We're also getting a discount on the cameras themselves because of being a current customer on the Ricotta cameras.
Who are, are the camera placements that we're looking at? Are they recommended by us or recommended by the company?
They came out a few weeks ago. We did a site survey. We walked around the entire property. And jointly, we just kind of looked at the vulnerable areas, areas that we thought needed more coverage than others. And, and some of the areas that we had originally proposed, we thought we could hold off on those because we're not building necessarily in that area. So we thought we can get the most bang for our buck with cameras, some on crisscrossing a little bit. We could have put more up, but that was, that was, I think, the minimum that we needed.
I think it covers the, the area really, really good, the, the way they're being placed.
Right.
And most of them are being placed on the buildings, aren't they?
Right, uh, the door, door areas. If you notice over there where the proposed police department is, it's nothing over that way yet because we're not gonna be there for a while.
I think I said, um, that included eight cameras. That's eight outdoor cameras. There will be two indoor cameras.
One for the reception area and then one for the council chamber.
That's correct.
Or there are the two.
Yes.
Chief, these coverage fans that we're looking at in the, in the photographs, is that the actual range of the camera?
Yes, generally, um, to get good focus and good view, I mean, you will see farther down, but.
And what, out of curiosity, what is the, the bright red cone? What's that mean versus the light red? There's one, that one that's dark red coming off of the maintenance going towards the council chambers.
I'm not looking at the.
Those are different types of camera, cameras. So the ones in the dark orange, the ones in the light pinkish purple color, and then the dark gray one up at the top. They're just different cameras because it depends on how far we would need it to zoom. Depending on where it's facing and what it's trying to cover.
And if I, if I understand this, they are set, but you can zoom them in if there's something that you needed to look at.
Right.
I mean, they are set to span, but if you needed to, if, if, if there was something going on and you needed to zoom it in for a specific object, you could do that.
Yes.
Okay. That's what I thought.
There are fixed cameras, though. They're not.
I know, I know.
Chief, is there any, is there any option with any of these cameras? And what I'm thinking of is after hours before the police department relocates, after hours, that area is pretty much empty and should be empty. Is there any capability of these cameras to provide an alert to the police department that there's movement in certain area as you do with a motion? Detector? Somebody's gonna come in and start messing with the maintenance where all the heavy duty stuff is. You won't know it until the next day.
Um. Yes and no. It's not only to get the motion detector, what you're talking about.
Yeah.
But if we had a certain, say, individual we're looking for or a certain car, you can key in that car and that car shows up and would alert us.
My, my concern is, you know, in the middle of the night, somebody comes through, say, drives through the development where there's no gate. They just walk over and do their stuff and walk away and they've got, unless someone's at the, the current PD, you know, observing, which I doubt there is. Then they're okay for the next eight, nine hours.
Yeah, that camera has not had a capability.
We'll have, I'm sure we'll have alarms there.
But I'm sure that technology is available. It's not on that camera.
I'm just looking, you know, I. Just me. Okay, thank you. I'm fine.
Chief, there is a, an item here that says battery backup.
Okay.
Um, on this.
What page is that? That may be the key.
It's on the second page of this. Second. The second page of the actual numbers. It says battery backup. Backup battery or AC forty-one.
Chief, while everybody's looking at, at the battery, um, I, so help me understand now. We just tied into, there, there, is there no other? Means of surveillance of, of, of the town property other than with this building automation service?
Sure.
Yes. That will work in with our mainframe and, and so forth.
No. Um, this is the proprietary where their software is only gonna work with their stuff. We can go out and get a different platform or cheaper platform, where now you got two different systems. Which, which would work, but it's just not as convenient.
Leanne mentioned the, uh, since we're already customers of them, that they give us a break. Is that a significant break? In other words, it's a break that we would not get with another company?
It came to nine thousand two hundred and something.
Okay, thank you.
That was the, that was the discount. Cause that was not on the first quote that we got back and we asked them about it and they applied that, right? Um, to answer your question, mayor, that battery backup is actually for the access control. That is.
And Leanne, given the amount and knowing that they included a discount, they would probably be a little bitter. But do you plan to go get additional bids?
Well, we discussed it and there's not, there's not anybody that can compare to this. Now, we can go out and get a bid for these two different types of services from different companies, but it's not gonna be a comparable bid. So that's why we're bringing it before you to discuss because.
Well, I can tell you, before I vote a yay to spend fifty-three thousand dollars, we're gonna have to, if we gotta have multiple bids on offense. Or mulch, we gotta have multiple bids on the fifty-three thousand dollar lineup.
Well, we did have multiple bids when we first went with Ricotta. We had three different companies come out here and we chose Ricotta.
And that's the reason, that's the reason I ask, you know, if there's not something, some other option, I mean, fifty-three thousand dollars. I mean, that's, that's, that's a, that's a big, big chunk of money. I mean, for me.
Chief, if I understand this correctly, but if I understand this, if we get them to. We would have to get people to rebid the cameras we already have because the cameras we already have would not be compatible to another system.
I would, I would just suggest. I mean, I don't care if you tell them that one council member didn't like the price. And I may be holding up progress, but that's fine. I mean, you know, if they want to drop the price or they want us to look elsewhere. But fifty-three thousand dollars is a lot of money. I mean, to have one, one, one scenario. I mean, I, I don't, I, I don't know about that.
My, my, my concern's a little bit more basic, chief. And you just, you just mentioned something that was very interesting. Councilmember Brown said, should we have not put this out for bid, et cetera? And you said, we got three in and we went with this one. Why was council not involved in that bidding process and approving it?
He's talking about when we bidded for the cameras to start off with, for the cameras at the park that we've already put in.
Right.
It was brought to us. We did, we had the three bids.
On this specifically for fifty-three thousand?
No, for, for the company that we chose to put the cameras in.
In the park.
This is the same company.
Yes, no, I, I fully understand that. I'm, I'm saying, uh, this coupled with Councilmember Brown's comment that we got a fifty-three thousand dollar question, question mark here.
Okay, we, this has not been bidded out.
Well, wait a minute. Well, let me back up, mayor. He just said, we had three come in and we went with this one.
Or the original.
No, no, forget the park.
But that's what he's talking about.
She's right. I mean.
You're talking about the park when three of them came in?
Yeah, a year ago.
See, I'm talking, I'm not worried about the park. The park is there. It's history. I'm, I'm looking at this in concern with what Councilmember Brown brought up fifty-three thousand. Will you say we got three bids and we went with this one?
That's why we went with.
What am I expected to, to, to understand here? I, I, I feel like I was misdirected unintentionally, but nevertheless, misdirected here. So I want to square that away. So if we're talking park, let's talk park. We're talking town hall. Let's talk town hall.
Well, let me just enter today real quick. The other bid that he's talking about was not just for the park. What you approved was the bid on the system rebuilding automation services for the cameras that are being installed around town. The cameras that we've done are at the park. Those are not gonna be the only cameras in that system that we're planning to do. But that's already been bid. So now as we add cameras around town, those are not gonna come back before you every time. We're just using this company to add cameras to add to this system that we have. So when we started looking at the cameras for town hall, we went with the system that we already had to add the cameras at town hall. Now, if you want us to do a different system.
No.
At town hall, then we would need to bid that out to different companies. So now they're, they're, they would be monitoring. They would have two different systems that they're monitoring. They pull up BAS for all the other cameras around town. And then they pull up this other system, whatever it may be for town hall.
Okay.
That was the purpose in going to them first.
And I, I understand that and I understand the convenience of having one system. But if you got system A that we've already, we've already done for the, and, and, and you'll have to pardon my ignorance. But I, I, I was thinking ahead to the property that, that we purchased. I mean, I was thinking ahead that we were gonna need eight more cameras. I was thinking about what we had in front of us, which was, which was community park. And any other of the, the developments that come in that wanted to, to buy into the program. But if you got system A, community park, and that's what I'm gonna call it, community park, you got system B. I don't know what I was involved in going back and looking at, at footage or, or what I was entail. But it looks like to me a, a new computer system with another screen would be a lot cheaper than fifty-three thousand dollars. I mean, if you, if, okay, let's say we have the community park thing right here. We get bids on to do the, the, what the property that we bought for town, for the town. I know it's more convenient for them to have it on one system, but how do we know it's not twenty thousand dollars cheaper? If we don't get bids and say, hey, put in a whole new system. Look, if these folks want to, want to do business and they, they'll, they'll bid it and come in cheap.
I, somehow I got lost in that. There's a, there's a step there that I, that I missed. I'm, I'm looking at this as, as we've got, chief, don't roll your eyes now. I'm looking at this as we've, all right, we've got a system. It's the, it's the park. And now we're essentially with this expanding the same system, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so regardless of monitors, I'm not, and I know that's not the gist of what you're saying. That's part of it. But I, I look at this and go, okay, that's fine. But at what point does council come involved? For example, police cars. Let's say we have a fleet of three chargers. And we have a commitment to buy from a particular dealer and all of a sudden we have expanded our need. We need ten new cars. Why do we have to go with that one? Why can't we go with somebody else? Or, or why is council not involved? Because now it's gonna be hundreds of thousands of dollars more than what we bargained for. For an example, what was the, what was the cost of the cameras we have at the park out of our pocket?
I, I don't, I don't understand. Here's the thing that I think, you've, you've got the system built in. The, the equipment to run the system is there. If you get another bid with a totally just different company, they're gonna have to put a new system in too. Now, this bid here takes in that the system is already there, which means there's no doubt that this. If we get another bid and if you want to get another bid, we can. But I would predict that that bid's gonna be twenty, thirty or forty thousand dollars more than the system is right now than this bid. Cause this bid already has their equipment there ready to, to add on, add this on to their system. If you add a new system on, they're gonna have to put their equipment in there and it's gonna cost you money to put their, their equipment in there too. So their, their bid's gonna include, uh, the thing to put their system in, whereas we already have that equipment. With the system we have. Is that not true?
J C, I understand what you're saying. My, my point is, what I was trying to get an answer from someone. And I'll have to throw a number out there because no one's given me the number. Let's say the camera is at the dog park that we, at the not dog park, cameras at the park. Let's say that whole system is sixteen thousand dollars. Okay, and, and we've, the council long ago discussed that and approved it. Suddenly. Now we're including fifty-three thousand dollars on that. That's a large chunk of change. And I want it, I just want council to become involved a little bit more in that. Right now it's a, it's pretty much, we're gonna do this and that's the price it's gonna be because we got the same system. If that's one system and it's connected to a computer and the police, why can't we have another system that?
Well, you can, you, you can have another system, but that system's gonna have to put more, their stuff in, which is gonna be a bigger price.
But that system's not, okay, I, I'm just saying.
I mean, I don't, hey, I don't care. I don't care if we go get another bid, but I'm gonna, I'm gonna predict it's gonna be a lot higher than this bid right here. About, about thirty to forty thousand dollars.
And it, and, and it may be, and I, I mean, I didn't mean no account warrants, but, but it's, you know, we're talking about fifty-three thousand dollars. I think that it would be a lose to not check another company, even if we have to have another system for fifty-three thousand.
Let me throw something out there just to chew on as well. And I have to ask you a question on this, but there is an exception under the public bidding. Law for sole source or single source. Uh, equipment, documents, what have you, um, services. And if you have, for example, if you've, um, already purchased and installed something. That is exclusive and can only work with one sort of software, for example. And I'll just give you an example. There's a, a talent that installed meters. That only were able to be read by a certain type of software. They had put in a tremendous number of meters based on the, the brand that they were. And then when they went to go procure the software, they were sort of limited in what software they could use based on what was available to work with those meters. This seems to be similar, um, but I do have a question and I think that might have some bearing on whether. If you were to pursue the sole source exception, you'd have to approve that in a, in a resolution. That you're approving the sole source exception, approving this bid based on the sole source exception. So you'd have to approve that very specifically in writing, um, at a meeting. If you, but, but one thing that you need to know though, I think in order to do that or not to do that. In, in deciding whether to, to seek other bids is this company, I, I don't, it doesn't appear to me at least to be the sole, the exclusive. Vendor for the Veraca camera and the camera systems. So you might be able to find somebody who can, who can put out a competing bid using the same cameras and same software. Who's just, is just a different company. And I don't know the answer to that. If there is, then you could seek additional bids for the same system. And if not, then you might, you might very well be, um, needing to go down the sole source exception. In order to get a, um, the compatible software and cameras.
If, if you, if you go against that sole source, you won't know until they, until they put a bid out whether it will work with, with the system you got, right?
That's just, I, I, I don't know the answer to that. I think i- if you, somebody who knows this market were, were to look online or do some research. They might find that there's, there's other vendors of the same types of, um, you know. Just because you use a certain type of. you know, just because you use a certain type of traffic cone, doesn't mean that the company that you're, you're contract contracting with is the only provider of that traffic cone, and, you know, or a computer system in a police car perhaps. Just because there's one that's listed that they're, they're using doesn't mean that they're the sole provider of that. Building automation services, I don't know if this is their proprietary software and cameras. That's what I'm saying. There might be other vendors of that same software and camera who can get you a different bid. It probably wouldn't be very different because you're, they're using the same stuff, but they might have a better labor price. I don't know. And if you take into account the discount, you probably are, you know, may well be better off, but if there are other vendors, I think you're obligated to seek additional bids.
Leanna, one more question. This fifty-three thousand or however much it is, will that could be coming out of the loan that we are, have? Or will it be coming out of our budget?
It will be coming out of the funds that we're using to update town.
Okay, so it's not going to be coming out of our budget per se. It will be coming out of the loan that we, we've taken out with the extra amount of money that we've got in the loan for the updates.
Right.
Okay, so it's not going to be taken out of our basic budget.
Correct.
Okay, I thought, nobody had said that before, so I just wanted to make sure I understood.
And just to clarify, I'm not, I'm not bringing this to you to say this is the company we had, so this is who we're going to. I'm bringing it to you because you're counsel, and I wanted you to review it. So I'm not telling you this is who we're using. That's not my job. I'm bringing you the information. So if you want more quotes, we'll get more quotes. They may not be apples to apples, but you can look at them as closely as you can, because this includes the, the network work in town hall, within town hall, running the lines, running the wiring, the, the ports and all that sort of stuff. It includes the surveillance systems, which is all of the outside cameras and the inside cameras. It also includes the security for the buildings, which is the door locks, the key locks. And if you look on this back page, just to clarify, the fifty-three thousand dollars is not for eight cameras. It is the network, the video surveillance system, access control, which is the keys, labor costs, shipping and tax. The camera systems itself are eighteen thousand eight sixty-seven. The access control for keyless entry and, and security is twelve thousand, labor's fourteen thousand. So, you know, look on this back page and see what is broken down. We can get different bids for those different aspects of this work.
I think, I think, to my opinion, if you're going to get a, a bid, you get a bid for the exact same stuff.
I don't know if there's anybody else that does all of this work, so we can get a bid from another company for the, the door locks and the security and another one for the cameras.
I'm happy with the company. I have no problem with that. We like the cameras and the system and everything else. I have no problem with it. But if there are other sources that will work, provide the same identical equipment, okay, with the same system, let's get, let's get some idea. Let's get some bids from them too. I, I just, and I understand this is just for our own knowledge right now. It's not pass it or fail it. But I, I just, I just have a little thing stuck in my throat saying, here it is. It's fifty-three grand. That's probably what we're going to use. I just want a couple more. Same system, fine.
That, that is not what we're handing you. That's not what I'm saying to you.
I know, I'm just saying.
So, so.
I want to clarify that for the public as well.
You said, you said apples and oranges. If we put out the right, the bid, let's use apples to apples. I don't want somebody else saying, oh, we're going to use different locks.
We will do our best.
Okay, that's all.
I don't know who else does.
Yeah, that's all I'm asking for.
Do you have a company that you know that does all this?
No, I don't. I'd have to.
So what you're going to probably end up having to do is get quotes for certain parts of it, from certain companies and certain parts from other companies, right?
Maybe. There may be some who do all of this. I don't know. I'd have to research it.
I, I, I'd like to see it, a bid from a company that does all of it. I don't think we need to parcel it out to different companies that now have to coordinate, work with each other. Just one, if there's, if there's another company that can do this, let's get a bid from them.
So Leanna's going to get us some bids and bring back to us so that we can, we can review and see what we got.
Right, and not from ten or twelve different contractors.
Whatever she can find.
Suppliers, just the one, whatever. If you can't find any that does this exactly, then don't worry about it. That's, I'm not looking to make you work a lot of hours.
The only thing I would say is if there's one, there's two, there's three. So unless they, they have proprietary ownership, am I correct, on the, the software, the cameras, that's what you were talking about. Unless they have the the ownership of that, there is other companies that can integrate with this.
Right, and it's, it's more about the licensing and the monitoring system. Is that correct, Chief? That's what we, that's what we already have through BAS. So that's what we were talking about as far as, I'm sure there's other people who sell these cameras, but it's tying those cameras into the system that we use to monitor them. That's what we're talking about.
Another company.
Get a new license.
Another company, through another company, right.
That's it. We're going to say some. You want?
Yeah, let me just say, one of the reasons we chose BAS, they're out of Greensboro, by the way. There are other Ricotta camera dealers, I'm sure. But it was also the support and everything that they gave. They come from Greensboro. I think one of the other companies came from Winston-Salem. Not everybody sells Ricotta, but just like, you know, you buy a vehicle, I mean, every Ford dealership is not the same. We were pleased with this one because of everything they offered. Their main thing originally was the door keys and swipe cards and all that stuff, that kind of security. Then they branched into the camera part of it. So they do the entire package. Some of the other ones that we looked at were just cameras only, so we can try. I don't know if you're going to find anything the same package or the same networking. Also, I might add, BAS, they worked out the kinks. For the last year or so, we had, we went to Spectrum. And Spectrum, it just wasn't working. So now we went with another system. So a lot of that, you know, their support was very good in, in what they did.
Well, Chief, if we're happy with it, I don't want to say, yeah, let's, let's go for it, or don't, don't review it. If you can't find anybody that can give you a complete package like this, that, that functions exactly like this, then let's go with the sole source. I don't have any problem with that, but I want to justify in my own mind, sole source.
It, the sole source, please a little bit. The sole source is only if there's, there's a reason why there is no other company that can provide these, the cameras and the software that's already integrated into your system. Just because one, another company can't provide the, the door access as well as the cameras, as well as the network in one quote, doesn't necessarily mean that it has to be sole source. You could break it up. But you could bid it separately.
But I don't want to do that. I don't think. The council wants to do that. I think we want to have somebody that says, I got the exact same product right here. It'll fit right in. Here's my, here's my number. If, if there isn't anybody, let's go with sole source. Let's, let's, you know, cut it down and go.
And I, I only quibble with you because of legal reasons. It's not, it's not sole sourced, and it would just be you're pursuing bids, and you don't get three, because you're, you're bidding it as a, a complete package like this. And then you would rebid it, and you would only get the one, and then you'd be able to move forward. It just wouldn't be called sole source.
My, my corporate law only went to one-on-one.
That's why.
You want to talk airplane, I'll talk to you.
But I'm just saying is, if, if, if sole source is possible, it would be if there's no other, and, and one thing that Chief said caught my attention is if they're providing monitoring already, then that may be something that may be hard to break out of, eh, to, to provide with a new vendor. So I think there's some room for discussion between myself and the staff and, and figuring out how you approach this. And you might also be able to do an RFP as opposed to a bid if it's a technological sort of type services that you're getting. So that way you're looking at, as the chief pointed out, you're, you're getting a good product from a reputable company and not so much, just, you know, bottom dollar, so.
So Chief and Leanna are going to work on that with council, right? Anybody else have any questions for Chief? Okay. Leanna?
The next item that I wanted to bring before you is that I am trying to get other quotes, plural quotes, Vanessa, for things at the new town hall to bring before you, but with the sign on the front of town hall, I need council's input about what you want that sign to be. Because without that, I can't get quotes. And we've never come to any definitive answer about what we want to have on the front of the building. Now, we are.
What you're talking about is the sign at the top of the building.
Right.
Not, not one of Wilson's Milk Road.
No, 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 I'm talking about the sign on the actual building that faces Seventy Highway and the, it does, it does. And just to keep in mind, you've talked about wanting to do your branding and logo this coming year. So to, to keep what's on the building as basic as possible, and then once you've got your branding logo, do some sort of ground sign on the, the slope between seventy and the building, might be an idea. But for right now, to have something on the building whenever we move in, I'm just bringing it to council for your input.
I think just putting town hall on the building would be sufficient. We're Wilson's Mills. I mean, everybody knows we are.
People gone by on, on the new I forty-two, they look up and they go, there's a town hall.
Yeah.
Which it says, Town Hall, Wilson's Mills.
Okay. If you put Wilson's Mills Town Hall, how big are your letters going to be?
Well, I don't know. That's very difficult to do tonight for some reason, just to throw it out and give me your ideas. That's a, that's something that should take place in a conference room and be brought to council.
That, that, that's what I was going to say. I, I would, I would say that, that, that Leanne and, I mean, because we've got to follow under the ordinance of, of what we can do and what we can't do. So, I mean, I would rather y'all just bring something back and say, this is.
I'm a little gun shy after bringing back the camera. I'm a little gun shy after just bringing you the camera.
The, the sign's not going to be fifty-three thousand dollars.
Leanna, and I have talked about it. And we suggest that we just put, for the time being, until we get our branding, that we just put town hall and, and leave it.
For the time being. That concerns me. That means we're going to change something.
Well, we might.
Well, what I was, what I was talking about was once you get your branding and your logo, so on the front of the building, you could just say, I mean, we could just put town hall again. People know they're in Wilson's Mills, or, you know, they have, we have signs that say, Welcome to Wilson's Mills. Or you could put Wilson's Mills Town Hall. That's why I'm bringing it to you to ask you, because inevitably, whatever we put on that building, somebody is going to complain about.
I know.
Right.
If you don't believe that, go read Facebook for the past three days.
Probably already complaining now. It's not even there.
Yeah.
I, I would say, anybody that's from Clayton or Smithville drives by on, on the new I forty-two, they know they're in Wilson's Mills. They've been here often enough, but anyway, that's driving through, we want to put our name on the map. And to them, we're not on the map. So if it says Wilson's Mills Town Hall.
But if, if we put Wilson Mills Town Hall up there, and then when we get our branding done, we put a sign here that says the town of Wilson's Mills, so forth, so on, then we're going to have it doubled. It's going to be in two places.
I, I just think this is a conference room with a, with a posted board and start drawing it out and figuring it out, not, not tonight.
Staff will be happy to do that if that's what you would like for us to. I didn't want to come to you with a, with a decision, though, without asking for your input, because, I mean, you're the council. So if that's what you'd like for staff to do, that's what we can do.
That's just me. There's three other, four other members here.
Okay.
What would you guys like? No, I'm serious. Would?
Do y'all want staff to sit down and, and figure this out and then bring it back to us?
Come back with some ideas. We can always modify then. I just don't want to make decisions tonight.
David.
No, that's not.
You always make decisions. Okay, so Leanna? At your staff meeting?
Will do. That's, unless anybody has any questions, that's all I have there.
Do we need to vote on, vote on that? Okay.
So y'all are going to come up with?
Everybody okay with that? This year?
I'm only.
You're not out of the woods yet.
Didn't think so. Okay, got any questions for your finance report?
Yes, ma'am.
Sure you do, Dave.
Was there something extraordinary on, on page, one of one on police department, yeah, police department expenditures, maintenance of vehicles?
Yes, that's, um, we had to have the wrecked police vehicle repaired.
Can you explain? I didn't know anything about that.
Yes, we, um, Officer Chief, would you like to elaborate? Yes, we had an officer involved in a, just his, it was a single car accident.
Hi, how are you? So, yeah, a little while back, Officer Robinson was coming into work, and there's a particular individual that races through town every morning. We, we haven't been able to catch him. And this particular morning, he was not far off, and he saw the person again flying down Fire Department Road. So he started to go, and the ground was wet, and he ended up sliding into a ditch and doing some damage to the vehicle, the front end and some to the back end.
Okay, I, I just.
Nobody got hurt. It was, you know.
Everybody seems to have heard something like that. I didn't hear anything of it.
Yeah, I mean, if it was, if it had turned into something bigger, then it probably would have been a bigger deal. But it really was, he just slid into the ditch.
I need to go to JD's more often. Um, next question.
David, I, I thought that was on our information last month from the police department.
But, okay. Was that in there last month? No, I don't think so. Okay, next question is on the next page. Power bill expenditures. Seventy, we've, we've booked. I'm looking at here. Hold on a second. We're not spending anything under power bill this year, or what?
David, you asked me about those last month.
Am I going through something here?
Okay, I'm, it's, it's in the minutes, but there's been, there have been no um, records of paving.
Thank you. Let's move on.
Okay.
All right, I, I don't have any other questions. Thank you.
Awesome.
I don't have anything else that's going to put me into a corner.
Okay.
Wait a minute, you folks were here last.
Okay, um, the next in my report is a grant project ordinance. This has to be play in place for our ARP funds. And so I will, um, we will need a motion on that for you to recommend of how we are supposed to spend our revenue replacement in reference to our ARP funds.
So we just need to approve this grant?
Yes, ma'am.
We just need to approve the grant ordinance?
Exactly, yes, ma'am.
And it, it covers everything?
Yes, ma'am.
If we have suggested changes to this.
No. Cannot.
You cannot.
Saying that just because it's me?
No.
No.
All right. At what point, at what point can we discuss what's in here?
You can't.
Wait a minute, wait a minute. Now I got stuff coming from all directions.
This money can only be spent for what it's designated for. You can't.
Now, who wrote, who wrote this?
That would be me, in the school of government.
Okay, that's, that's what I'm getting at. So if, if, if there's any changes to this, is this the place to bring them up? Recommend changes? That's what I'm getting at.
Sure. Kind of changes.
You said yes, and you say no. Well, all right, go, all right, let me just, a very simple one. The pages are not numbered, however, it's under internal control procedures specific to payroll.
That's a whole different, that's a whole different.
This, this ordinance is two pages.
Go, move it.
Now, we got.
I made a motion.
I got you.
We got to approve this ordinance.
I got you. I'm sorry. I apologize. I didn't see that on there.
We have just got to approve this grant.
All right.
Yeah, I, I would make a motion that we approve the grant project ordinance for the town of Wilson's Mills, American Rescue Plan Act of twenty twenty-one, coronavirus state and local physical recovery funds, as written.
Okay, Councilman Brown made the motion. Councilman McGowan seconded it. All in favor, let the number say aye.
Aye.
Okay, next on the agenda is internal control procedures. Mr. David?
Now, if you have a question about this one, you can.
Thank you. All right, I just ran the two together for some reason. Thank you. All right, I just ran the two together for some reason. And I've actually, I took an hour and a half yesterday. I read through this entire thing, so I'm not just cherry picking stuff that I just came.
If you say so.
I've got, I've got circle, I got notes. I'm gonna hit them too in a minute. But here, first off, um, yes, go right ahead.
Why is this before us now? Is it just something that we've overlooked in the past that we need to adopt?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, that was easy. Um, where it says, uh, the town, I mean, well, just give you an example, don't even look for it, just listen. The town maintains an official personnel policy that was adopted by the Board of Commissioners in January. Are you referring to the council?
Yes.
Then why does it say Board of Commissioners? Is that what it was called back then?
Well, I can change that if you would like.
Yes, I'd like to change. There's several instances where it says.
Okay, I can change that. That's my problem.
Say Town Council.
Okay.
All right. Now, this next one's gonna, you might want to pull up a sheet, a a seat there, Ms. Sherry. He's looking at my notes and I I'm I'm very concerned about this. So, all right. Where we have purchases of, uh, a thousand to four thousand nine hundred ninety-nine, the town administrator is is obligated or allowed to go ahead and pay for that uh, without any kind of council, um, interference or anything. Am I correct?
Yes, that's.
I'm on the last, actual last page, the last page where it's signed by Leanna Worley. It's and it has to do with the internal control procedures for purchasing. Okay, so. Yep, the top three bullets. I want to go to the fourth bullet, purchases of fifty thousand dollars or more.
Fifty-five thousand.
Price quotes from at least three, uh, vendors in case of limited availability for the supplies needed, every effort, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. We'll go with two vendors. Uh, the price quote should be documented on the purchase order. All right. Now, what I'm concerned about here is when we put out bids for quotes. I would like this to have something in there that says, uh, purchases of five thousand or more must have price quotes from at least three, parentheses, three vendors, and insert something along the lines of, in the form and manner of a universally accepted written quote. You understand what I'm trying to say here? It doesn't say that, but I'm trying to be very, very explicit in how we need to get these quotes for goods or services back. I never.
That's the only way we can.
The company is gonna give you the quote by the the method that they give you. They're not gonna adhere to the method that we ask. They're gonna, that you, we're gonna ask them to make a quote on a certain thing.
Let me, let me intervene here. Are you acceptable with email quotes?
Yes.
I am not. As as for the vendor or the 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 park fencing, the dog park fencing, those are legitimate quotes on a company letterhead and signed by a representative, an authorized representative of that company, and they break it down. I'm not interested. And I don't want to ever have this town accept an email quote. Hey, here's what I'll pay for this, or here's what I'll charge you for this.
Oh, I mean, if they do, and if they get, if do an email quote and do everything you're asking for, what's the difference? They're gonna have a signature on it.
No, but it, this is, this has to do with moving into the twenty-first century and being professional and not having email quotes. That, you know, somebody drive by and yelling through the window, here's, here's my bid and keep on going. It's ridiculous. We've accepted an email quote before, and I never, ever want to accept an email quote again, or bid, rather, I should say. I want people to do it in writing with their letterhead and complete breakdown of what they're gonna charge, a date on it, and signed by someone of off of authority.
But you're not talking about doing snail mail mailing it in.
Yes, I am. Yes, I am. It has, and it has to be.
You can count that out because that's not the twenty-first century any longer.
Okay, what do you suggest?
Well, I can tell you from a business point of view, I send out a lot of of estimates and and they're all email. Everything's electronic now.
Okay, I would, I would accept something that is a scanned official document from that company and they send it to us via email. But it's a scanned document that we can print and there it is. I don't want an email that says to whom it may concern, or or here, Dear Wilson's Mills.
Most companies don't do that.
But that's what you're saying. We've had that before. We accepted it. And I'm trying to say, I never want, I want to see professional. I want to see someone take the time in that company to type it out or whatever they do on a form, scan it and email it to us. That's fine. Whatever, as long as it's received in a, at a certain point in time.
Yeah, that has to be in the bid when you send out the bid. You tell them.
Saying that as long as it is, but I want it done like that. See, what I'm trying to prevent is email, straight email, here's what I'll do. And you guys don't care about that.
Know that you're gonna get them.
That's fine. You don't care about. I I I understand that.
And what 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 David's talking about, and I agree, if I'm gonna, if if I'm, if I'm in the business, I'm gonna type out, hey, I'm Tim Brown. I'll, I'll, I'll wax you floors for fifty dollars. You want me to do it? Well, that's not very professional.
I know that.
But the way that 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 most businesses send it out is on company letterhead.
Right.
And it's broken down, here's your price, and 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 if you accepted, you hit this button electronically and and it's accepted, and then that's a binding contract.
That's fine.
Yeah.
I just do not want an email that says, I'll do it for this price. We have accepted.
I don't think we do that.
We have accepted that in the past, and I never want us to accept that again.
We do not need to do that. It needs to be on a official letterhead.
Then this needs to be adjusted somehow, okay, on official letterhead, et cetera. Because this this just opens it up to anybody dropping a note on your desk. And that is very unprofessional. We're a growing town and we should never accept anything like that.
Question for council. If somebody, if if we put out bids, and 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 I'm thinking about what they they've saying is, i- i- if we put out bids and somebody hears about it and they just drop a note, a handwritten note, and we don't have it specified in in this this that we're we're looking at, do we have to consider that handwritten proposal?
I believe so, if it's, but 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 there's a key word in the bidding statutes that you might be able to rely upon, and that is it has to be, uh, qualified and, um, we're escaping now, but the bid has to be, um, has to meet the criteria that you set out. So if it doesn't set out line items, if you requested line items for something, or, um, I can't think, but if it's just, it's just has a number on it, then it doesn't give you the detail that you need to.
In other words, they they have to be.
Responsive, excuse me, it has to be responsive.
Yeah, a- and 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 the reason I ask you that is, is anybody that the town does business with should be registered with the Secretary of State, in my opinion, as a, as a legitimate business. Um, and I don't know that that we can require that, but.
Why can we not require that they have a legitimate business license with the Secretary of State? This would prevent somebody in their basement from saying, hey, I can do that. And I'll throw it out there.
I mean, if they, if they weren't qualified, capable of performing the work, then you you wouldn't have to accept the bid.
But how do we know?
You look into it.
Well, then, yeah, right, they'd have to do research to find out. But if they they put a business license number on there, like I'm sure others have, we'd have that taken care of. If not, then they're misrepresenting themselves. I'm throwing a lot of legal stuff at you, aren't I?
I don't know if that's a legal question more so, it's just, it's a matter of policy as to whether you want to require that.
I just want things, you know, completely above board for.
Well, how about, how about if if you just amended it and put in on on company letterhead?
Okay, I can do that.
And and and, you know, be- because I do think it needs to be on company letterhead. Everything I send out is on company letterhead. But on company letterhead and, um, you know, and but of course, there again, I mean, you know, anybody go on Google and make a company letterhead in a skinny minute. And that's the reason that I was asking about, you know, Secretary of State, but, you know, because if they're registered with Secretary of State, they're they're a legitimate business. But that's all I'm gonna say about that. But I I do have a question for for Leanne on bullet number three when we get to there, that.
Okay, let me, let me finish up one more thing here, and that is, when the, uh, when these emailed or scanned documents come in, who do they come in to? Who are they addressed to?
It's according whoever asked for the quote. Or for the, um, for what's being purchased.
Okay, that's, that's fine.
Say like if, um, if Patrick was going up, you know, by a long war, I wouldn't get his quote.
I get it. What I, what I would like to see, or at least maybe we can discuss and tell me if I'm wrong, but by the time that quote gets in, what I'm saying is, what I'm trying to prevent is that quote just flying around town hall for everybody and anybody to see. Is there some way?
Absolutely not. It's in a person's folder on their desk.
Okay, it's, and it's, it's, nobody can see it. Nobody's looking at it.
I wouldn't think so, no.
And what I would suggest, and if it's possible, uh, to not put it in our, in our packets, because then it's.
Quotes are public record.
Why, why can they not be public record after they are given to us here in the next town council meeting?
Are you talking about sealed?
Sealed.
Well, that's, well, that's a different.
Well, all right.
Yes.
So there's quotes and, or.
Yes, so it's two totally different things.
Okay, so sealed quotes are.
Now, that's sealed bids.
Sealed bids, okay. Sealed bids are open by whom?
Um, that would be the town council, when appointed, dated, and timed.
Have we ever opened a sealed bid here?
I'm not sure. That was before my time.
We've not had any, I mean, I think maybe.
Years ago. Why, why would we ask for a sealed bid as opposed to?
We have a sealed.
There's a legal.
For the sewer project. That was a sealed bid.
There's a a legal threshold for requiring sealed bids, and it's five hundred thousand dollars for most, uh, construction and repair work.
Right.
I did not know that.
Yes.
I mean, I I think like, like the chief gets prices on on cruisers, you know, he, I mean, I I would, I would hope that the chief and I, and I, I think that that he would get, get the best price he could, although that's, that's a hot commodity.
Exactly.
He knows, but, you know, and other things, you know, the the pricing on on what we talked about, this BAS, Building Automation Services. You know, I mean, I I don't have a problem with with them getting, I I don't want to get into the town council getting into sealed bids. Um, but of course, council, we're not.
I I actually have been more questions, thank you.
Awesome. Thank you.
Okay.
Tim.
I I do, I I have, uh, bullet number three on the same page. No, I'm sorry. Yeah, bullet number three. The town administrators to have the authority to approve approve all purchases or purchase, purchase orders of one thousand to forty-nine ninety-nine. Is that in? Is that in line with other towns of our size?
No, their threshold is usually higher than that. I think it was raised to five thousand about five years ago, because it used to be two or three hundred, I think. Yeah, it's changed over the years. Most of it is like ten to twenty thousand. Um, but now, our finance policy also requires us to get quotes and bids on pretty much anything. I mean, we're, e- even if it's two hundred dollars, I ask my department heads to be sure you go out and check prices on stuff. Don't just go with the first person. And if you don't, if it's not something that's required to be brought before council because of the price threshold, it's still kept in a folder. You know, they check the cost on a, uh, I don't know, give me a piece of equipment, Patrick.
Well, we can't, let me interrupt. I I I don't, I I don't, I, I, that's not the reason I ask, and I don't, I don't really, really care if it's kept in a folder or a file or in a safe. Reason I ask is, how how restrictive is that to you in day-to-day operations of the of of the town?
The five thousand threshold?
Because I'm, and here's the reason I ask is because I know other town administrators, town managers that that are about our size, their threshold is a little, little bit more. But if it doesn't restrict you, then that's fine. But, I mean.
So far, I wouldn't say it's any kind of a restriction. I mean, I think the more projects that we start doing, especially with the construction and stuff at town halls, not the actual construction of the new police department at some point, but I'm talking about this other stuff, it becomes a problem, then we'll come back and talk with you about it.
Okay, and that's, and that's fair enough. But I, you know, I just, I I know other town, 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 town administrators or or town managers have have that that leeway and 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 I saw it in here, and I wanted to ask if it was restricting, uh, your day-to-day operations or month-to-month operations.
Not right now, no.
Okay, but you'll let us know if it begins to.
Will you let me know if you get tired of approving stuff?
Yeah.
Sherry, while we still got you there, don't go away. One quick question came to mind.
Sure.
We still have budgeted for this per, this current fiscal year, the purchase of that additional town vehicle. Am I correct?
Well, we've already purchased two vehicles.
Are you talking about not the, for the police department?
No, not the police department. We were talking about one, one more, a larger SUV.
That wasn't budgeted.
It wasn't budgeted.
But it was approved.
Okay.
By the town council.
To come out of.
Okay.
It was not budgeted last year in order to purchase the administration a new vehicle, so therefore it wasn't budgeted.
Okay.
But it hasn't, it has not been purchased yet.
The purchase would be authorized.
Oh, the purchase has already been authorized.
Yeah, okay. Has any, anybody been, any done, anyone done anything on that?
I have, I have been, uh, talking with Matthews Motors. And the general manager up there, I think the to, we we told, we said we were looking for something under thirty thousand dollars, if I remember correctly. The general manager up there, they have yet to get one in. He told me yesterday that he's getting five in this week. And if any, um, suit what we're looking for, he's promised me he'll look at trying to find one that will be less than thirty thousand dollars.
Okay.
And and he's going to give it to us at five percent, five percent, if 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 we just choose he is, you gotta look at other ones, I know that, but he said he'll give it at five percent above their price.
Okay.
If it keeps, if he can keep it under thirty thousand.
But the need is, the need is still there by the town.
And JC, that's, that's for, that's, that's for like the other town, town employees to use.
Right.
Yes, I mean. And the reason they wanted the SUV is it may have more rooms to, to, in case they had. But I've talked with him, now we can talk to other dealers too. I'm not, he's not the only dealer that you can talk to, but, uh, I know, I know him, I know the owner.
Okay, that's good.
Okay, do we need to vote on this year?
Yes.
We need it. Okay, on this internal control procedures for the town of Wilson's Mills.
I'm making a motion that we approve the internal control procedures for the town of Wilson Mills.
With the recommended changes, with the recommended change.
With the changes.
Mayor Pro Tim Trippett made the motion. Councilman Brown seconded it. All in favor, let it be number say aye.
Uh, aye.
Thank you, council.
Awesome. Thank you, Sherry.
You have the planning departments, uh, monthly report in front of you. Are there any questions on anything?
I have one question, just, just off the top of your head. I don't need the exact number. Based on what we're looking at here, waiting on preliminary plans, developer working on site, and all the ones that 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 are not built out. What's the, what what would you say the timeframe on these two pages that we're looking at completion? A year, two years?
For everything?
Yeah, everything that I'm looking at on these two pages.
Probably twenty twenty-eight because of the size of some of those subdivisions.
And let me ask you this, that, so, okay, so that's what, five years?
Mm-hmm.
In five years, just round figures, what's the number of households, houses that we're looking at?
It's around forty-two hundred.
Okay, additional?
Additional. Not counting the build out.
Yeah. Uh, question on, um, Sutherland Mills, just out of curiosity, because it's the road I take every day uh, across some rise land and construction plans approved. Does that mean they'll start construction soon?
They are still waiting on some of their paperwork from the state.
Do you, does this, has the state looked at that at all? Do do they think, and how many home, that's seven hundred homes?
No, that one's, um, around five fifty.
Five hundred and fifty homes.
Mm-hmm.
Is the state looking at anything as to how to improve, uh, Sutherland Road or Fire Department Road?
There has been a transportation impact analysis completed for that subdivision, and there have been turn lanes. There are turn lanes that will have to be added to that.
Right, turn lanes, but but that, that's, that's a massive amount of vehicles in addition to what we've already got. All right. Right, turn lanes, but but that, that's, that's a massive amount of vehicles in addition to what we've already got, all right, that's not your jurisdiction, but thank you.
Ask, the the does, the, do you have any, any? Communication with anybody with DOT about about what we're approving? About, uh, and maybe even with the school system, what we're, so so you're you're in, your offices in in communication with. With DOT as far as looking forward, so.
Yes, I have two engineer contacts with the state DOT that I talk to on a regular basis. Also have a school system, um, contact that I talk to on a regular basis.
And I'm gonna tell you why I why I ask that, is because some people think that we control all streets and roads that are within the town limits, and we don't. Um, we're we're at the 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 mercy to the state on what they will do and what they will not do, if it's not a town street. So that's the reason that I ask you, maybe some clarity for some folks that are watching or maybe watching a day or two. To understand that we don't control how to expand state roads, we can only do town, town streets.
Right, if it's a state-maintained road and there's a development coming along, even though that development may be in our jurisdiction, planning-wise. That road still must be approved for any changes through North Carolina DOT. We can still take the streets over in the development. But the original road has to be approved by DOT with any changes.
And a good way to think about it, if it's got a line on it, it's a state-maintained road. If it doesn't, it's a town maintained, or a subdivision maintained. I have a question about Easton Creek, across the road from me.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, this is going to be split into two phases?
Yes, he originally submitted the entire thing at one time, and when I was going back through that final plat, getting ready for my lars. He had moved one of his property lines back, and that put wetlands. On some of those lots, and when I started investigating, we actually have to have a floodplain permit. To cover those lots, so instead of holding up the entire project, he decided to split it so he can go ahead and start building it in the front while we're working through the floodplain permit at the back.
Okay, does this also include the the property that Jason's my property on Power Town? Has he submitted that as part of this, or is this just across the road?
This is just across the road, I've not received anything for the other side of Palatine Road.
So he, okay, that that answers my question.
Okay.
Yeah, okay.
Um, I I can tell you, I stand up here every month and say I'm getting phone calls for commercial. Um, but I can stand up here and officially tell you tonight that we do have a Dollar General coming to town. So that has been confirmed and can now, the cat can be out of the bag. Wilson Mills Road and Main Street.
Oh, that would be a great location, okay.
Any more questions?
That's the one we'd be talking about, what we, what they're gonna put there, okay, got that one good. It's Emily.
Hello. Um, excuse me. Just updates on the farmer's market, we've had two since our last meeting, there was our first two. Um, our first one, the wind kind of got the better of us, but this one, this past Saturday was much better. And, um, I think we're in the works to get some live music, get some markets in the future. Um, Mayor Bird's church has been standing in for the, um, markets that we do not have a food truck for. Um, so we can still have lunch for the people that are out there for them to purchase, and they also have breakfast for us to purchase, that's delicious. And, um, we are getting ready for our next market on the sixth of May, so since it's only the first and third, that'll be the next market.
Chief Williams.
You've got my report in front of you, any questions?
I don't have any questions, I just want to say thank you very much, thank you, Sergeant, for putting all this together, that's very, very helpful to us. I'd like to make it a monthly thing, if that's possible, is that not a great task, okay, it it gives us a good look at this and. Councilman Brown brought up a good question, where, where in the type of call the breakdown is things like assaults?
Okay, so, so right now, the statistics that we have are basically just arrests, okay? I added the footnote about the DWIs because that was an unusually high month, but. Obviously, I want to get a lot more detailed with these statistics, however, we switched to the new system RMS, so we're adjusting to that. And I don't want to bore you with fifteen pages of statistics either, so I'm trying to pick out the stuff that makes the most sense.
Yeah, for example, noise complaints, that, that's.
Right, well, so we look at these as more, um. I'm looking at the severity and the danger levels in these calls, really, when I listen like this. Um, my job really basically is allocating our assets properly to make sure that we're covering the town at peak times that we need to, and when the most dangerous things happen that we need to. And so that's where these numbers are basically pulled from, um, and it's, we're getting much more detailed than that as we move forward.
Great, thank you very much, very good.
I would like to point out, though, since we're looking at it, um, if you notice the activities. So, uh, the activities, the numbers there, these, this is the lowest priority police work activities, we're talking about building checks, driving through the neighborhoods, that's like the low priority stuff. Calls for service is kind of the next level up, um, alarm calls, that kind of stuff, um, things that don't require necessarily a police report, but that we document. As you can see, for the most part, with one or two small anomalies here, as the calls for service go up in number, the activities go down. Um, and that kind of jumped out at me, because what that shows is that we're, we're not having a whole lot of free time out there.
Yeah, you're spending time on the calls.
Right, and so that means that, um, from a personnel standpoint, like we're at, we're at peak.
Right.
And if the call volume begins to surge, uh, this deterrence and building checks and that kind of stuff, which basically is deterring crime, that that will kind of go away. Um, and so then the quality of life suffers, so I just wanted to point that out.
I might, I might bring up something that that, um, Chief, you and I talked about this not too long ago, but it it struck me the other day. Um, you know, you gave me the answer, which was the proper answer, and I related that to, relayed that to a, um, a, a resident. That I stopped to talk to, that I've known for for a long time, and his question to me was, he goes, how come I don't see the police coming through here anymore? He said, I've seen one today, and I said, wow, that's interesting, I said, when I pulled in your driveway, you were in your garage and you had your back to me for two minutes. Where were you before that, Bob? He goes, I was around back, I said, how long? He said, I was messing with such and such, I was there maybe half hour. I said, you see the police go by then? No, I couldn't because I wasn't, never mind. Then he saw the point, that unless you're sitting there, like you said, on your front porch watching twenty-four hours a day, we've had citizens, uh, come to me and say, they never come by my house anymore. Well, unless you're sitting out there twenty-four hours a day, you're not going to see them, but I'll guarantee you, they're coming by your house at a minimum of four times a day. So I just want to bring that up, thank you very much, Chief, for bringing that to my attention, so I could relay that to a citizen.
I I have, I have a question, the school resource officer, Chief, when, when, when are we looking to bring them on board?
He started officially this week.
Oh, good, 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 and my other thing is, do, and I I say you have the the podium, it might be some other staff. Do we have any idea on Swift Creek Road?
Yeah, the last break that we got is going to be closed for at least another year.
And I I'll just say it, it looks like to me they've abandoned working on, working on Swift Creek Road. And come up here, and when they already had half a bridge started building, they quit on it, and then to come down here and shut down this. Do we know if there's any rhyme or reason to it, or, I mean, i- is there, I mean, look, I I'm just, I'm I'm just a simple person. But I, but citizens asked me about this, and I said, I I don't have any idea.
I agree, we have half a bridge across from Handy Mart.
And yet we shut down a road, and we stop on this bridge over here at Handy Mart, and they're starting, they're finally starting to work on it again. I I I'm just, but again, I'm not the smartest, smartest person in the world, but.
I'd say DOT has been pretty good in updating us on big projects and big changes, the little stuff here and there, not so much, um, when we've had. Uh, accidents or complaints about the light changes, you know, we've gone to them and they've been receptive of it, so they're providing this information here and there.
Well, here here's my, here's my issue, and I'll just get to the heart of it. For somebody to be at this, let's say this school, and to get to my house, they got to go around their elbow to get to the air. Now. I I'm not sure what the plans, and I've seen them, uh, in years past. But I'm not sure how hard it is to go ahead and put a little asphalt. You know, they can do what they've already done out there, it can be bumpy, that's fine. But put some asphalt though through there, so so a fire truck can get to my neighborhood and the other neighborhoods on that road. The EMS unit can get there, the police officer can get there without having to go halfway to Clayton to come back around. That's, that's what's at the heart of my issue, for those people to live in over there close to where I live, that are in town, who have been cut off from emergency services. And we're, we're dragging our feet on it, and we've closed off a road. And 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 I'm here in tonight another year. For me and those people over there for emergency services, that's unacceptable. Um, if we can't plan any further than a year out. Let's just hold off and get some more people to give some input, now that's just my opinion for people over there on that side of Swift Creek Road. But, you know, that's the reason I ask about a timeframe.
We do have a lot of questions, so what would it take to have a DOT rep come in here and and talk to us for half an hour? We have questions, we have to answer to the public too. And you're the police department, you can't tell us those answers, right?
We can contact DOT and see if somebody can be.
I mean, I I think.
I don't, I would not hold your breath on it, because the the project has already been. Finalized, I guess you would say, the timeline.
Technically, DOT really doesn't have any control because it's our flat iron.
Once they, once they award the bid to the company.
When they write the check, so.
Have a flat iron rep to stand there and say, here's what we're doing for Swift Creek.
Well, I I would, I would charge Leanne and the chief. To get in touch with whoever's chairman of the Transportation Committee for the state of North Carolina. We either contact our local, local, uh, representative, and see if we can't get somebody in here for for safety reasons. That that road's still closed, and it's going to be closed for another year. Not for convenience, but for safety.
See what DOT says.
Well, I'd I'd go to the, to to the Department of Transportation, well, not Department of Transportation, but the. The chairman of the Transportation Committee with the House of Representatives. They can, they can get somebody here to help us understand for our, for our, for our community members.
Okay.
We have a commission meeting in a couple of weeks, I thought.
We'll see what we can do, Leanna can can contact some people. Okay, we have an amendment to the community park ordinance. And I think he's got some very valid pictures of why we have a person at the park with a handgun. Not only at the park, but playing in the swing set at the park. Chief, does, does this guy even have children that's playing there, or is he, is he by, just him and his wife?
Um, it looked like he may have had some children, it's hard to tell. But sometimes adults do go out there and just.
Yeah, I know, I know, sometime I've seen him out there.
Do we have that posted, no, no firearms?
There is one sign posted, and honestly, I just wanted to bring this to your attention, there are several things we could do, more signage posted. I'd like some clarity over open carry, to me, the way the current ordinance reads. I mean, I think it's, I know what they're trying to say, but maybe it needs to be specified, open carry is not allowed, or some, some communities have no firearms allowed.
So that, this what you have presented to us is, is the section that you want changed?
No.
No.
I just want you guys to look at it, and if you want to modify it, you can, but this was the problem.
Is this the way it reads now?
This is the way it reads now.
Oh, okay.
Is there a county ordinance that that would supersede anything that we come up with?
I don't think so.
There is, um, state law on, that limits what local governments can do with respect to prohibiting firearms. Open carry concealed, that sort of thing, and I'll be honest, I don't recall exactly what it states with respect to parks. There are some areas where you can prohibit by posting the carrying of concealed weapons, but I I think it's. I think it, I don't think it includes open carry, you might not be able to prohibit that by state law, I'll I'll have to double check on that provision.
I was gonna say, I'd be, that would be something for you guys, because open carry is legal, I mean, you know, and if you got to conceal carry, I mean. So I I, before I'd say anything, I'd, I'd, I'd need your, your professional input.
Yeah, despite concealed carry, uh, being the rule generally, there, you are allowed to post a prohibition against concealed carry in certain areas, like I said, um, public buildings and stuff like that. But I I can't recall exactly this, the, the status of open carry in the park, I just have to double check that statute.
So maybe, maybe you need to, to look at this ordinance and see if it complies with.
Chief, I've I've read where other, well, states, for example, that where. People go far above and beyond and start open carrying, you know, AR fifteens in Walmart, where it's legal, it's not posted that it's prohibited. But there is a a statute in some of these states that that specifies. Threatening, if it appears threat, you're allowed to carry it, but if it appears threatening, then it is illegal.
True.
You know, walking into a park with an AR fifteen. It's legal, but it's threatening to the people that are there, it's ruled as threatening, would that apply to us at all here? Because it may be legal to open carry in the park, but it's it's threatening behavior.
I think you're referring to like going armed to the terror of public.
I'm sorry, missed that.
I think you're referring like going armed to the terror of public or something like that.
Something like that, right?
Yeah, um. I thought there were some communities here in North Carolina more, I guess, the more progressive areas that don't allow firearms at all in the park areas.
I think that, I think that is the case, I just, I double check, you may be more familiar, but I I think it changed about eight, seven, eight years ago. Very specifically as to parks.
I'm not asking for that, I just want you guys to just understand that, um. He did come out, we didn't get any complaints that day, but I could see if he goes out there regularly, there will be some parents complaining about this guy with a sidearm, firearm.
Yeah, I'd I'd be more than happy to, uh, to look at doing a, an ordinance that defines what exactly we want to prohibit or allow. But, but threatening to me, I mean. And I think we need to look at that, let's not reinvent the wheel, if there's something out there. Let's look at it.
So Chief, um, let's let council, uh, look at it and see if it is different, then we might need to redo this part of the ordinance. But, so if y'all understand, this is the way our ordinance reads now, so if we need to change it, then we're gonna have to change the ordinance. So, but we need to be sure that we're not breaking the law or or trying to supersede it in any way. Thank you, Chief, for bringing this to our attention.
Okay.
Does anybody have any more questions for Chief?
You guys got my report, any questions?
I warned you it was going to be a talking night, I'm not done yet. Uh, one quick question, I noticed the other day when I was at the park, the, uh, the areas that we've got defined for the swings and the playground, do we have anything? Uh, in in the works to refresh the mulch that was in there, because I noticed a lot of it is washed away over the years. And mulch breaks down, so.
Yes, sir, I was, uh, going to talk to Leanne about that, because we have a, uh, open space, uh, some money in open space we need to spend, and I was going to do that with, uh, redo all the mulch out there.
I I thought you were looking at, thank you.
We'll say the signs look awesome, where you, where you painted, y'all painted, they look good.
Tony done a good job.
Yeah, I I I toed, I toed the horn at you on the way by one day. Yeah, I, I, I tooted, I tooted the horn at you on the way by one day, but they do, they look good.
They do, they look awesome. Thank y'all so much. Anyone have anything else for Patrick? Councilman comment?
The only comment I have is just to advise you, um, the, the project that I've been working on, and that's the food pantry. You remember that at all? Okay, that has not gone away. We're still on it. I had a meeting with Leanna and Judge Rawls, retired Judge Rawls, the other day at Town Hall, and she, she gave, pardon me?
Miss Addie.
Well, Miss Addie, Judge Rawl, you call her what you like. Anyway, she gave us a lot of good pointers. She was the perfect one to request, um, a, a meeting with, because she knew all the contacts. The bottom line is, if we're not looking, obviously, to get involved in something like this until possibly the start of next year, when we open our farmer's market, that would be a great time to kick it off. So over the winter, we're gonna be getting things in place, and Ms. Rawls advised us, correct me if I'm wrong, Leanna, but they, they have everything in place, and they have the storage, they have the labor, they have the transportation capability, and would be happy to help us, okay? And we're not looking at, at putting in there any kind of perishables. All right?
You're gonna just keep working on it?
Yes, I want to keep, in fact, I made, uh, sent out two emails today, and I made a phone call on it, so we're moving on it.
Anyone else? At this time, we'll open the meeting to our second open forum. If anyone has any comments they would like to make, please come forward. State your name, your address, and limit your comments to three minutes. Thank you, sir. Anyone else? I'll close the open forum. And at this time.
Make a motion, we can close session. I don't have any good references.
Do we have to state the reference, Leanna?
It is North Carolina General Statute one forty-three dash three eighteen dot, dot eleven A two.
So I make a motion, we can win the closed session for the reference as stated.
Councilman McGowan made the motion to go into closed session, and Councilman Trippett seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
So we'll take just a little bit of break.